A proclamation. Whereas the city of San Marcos proudly recognizes the San Marcos Main Street program for its outstanding contributions to the vitality, identity, and economic prosperity of our historic downtown district. And whereas downtown San Marcos stands as the thriving heart of our community, home to nearly 300 locally owned businesses employing over 2,300 people and nearly 1,000 residents. And whereas the San Marcos Main Street program has been a cornerstone of downtown revitalization for nearly four decades and will celebrate its 40th anniversary as a designated Texas Main Street city in 2026. And whereas over the life of the program, downtown San Marcos has seen more than $150 million in reinvestment, including 40 million in the past five years alone, demonstrating the enduring impact of public-private partnerships and community-driven development. And whereas since the creation of the Main Street Incentive Grant in 2012, the program has distributed 132,000 micro grants to 86 downtown businesses, supporting small business growth and facade improvements. And whereas the city of San Marcos has invested 12.2 million in downtown infrastructure over the past decade, with an additional 14 million in improvements beginning construction in 2026, including a pioneering downtown alley reconstruction project that will serve as a pilot for green alley infrastructure. And whereas after decades of steady momentum, the San Marcos Main Street program has been recognized as a semifinalist for the 2026 Great American Main Street Awards, a prestigious national award that celebrates excellence in downtown revitalization. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 8th day of October of 2025 as Downtown San Marcos Day, and do hereby call upon all persons of San Marcos to recognize and celebrate the San Marcos Main Street program for its visionary leadership, tireless dedication, and transformative impact on our community. Thank you all for the role that you play in having this success for us, and this is a big deal.
Thank you, Josie Faletta, Downtown Manager. I am really excited to be making this announcement today. Thank you, Carla. We have been nominated as a semifinalist for a national award. It's actually the highest honor any Main Street program can achieve is the Great American Main Street Award. So we are one of eight semifinalists nationally. We won't find out until April whether or not we're a winner, but we're celebrating early because it's a big deal to even be selected as a semifinalist among our peers. And up here, we have our Main Street staff. We have both our office staff, Carla and Gabriela, but we also have two members of our clean team, Bob and Juan. Yes, we're so excited. I made them come here today because it's not just about the work that we do that's very visible with the events and social media and grants. It's the work that these guys do every day, keeping downtown clean and well-maintained. So I wanted to make sure that they were here to get their flowers as well. But we also have some members from the state coordinating program. So all of these lovely people behind me work with our Texas Main Street program, and they're also really excited for us to receive this designation because we had a winner last year with Dennison, and we all have fingers crossed to have another Texas winner. We also have our board chair, Anita, and our council liaison, Amanda Gonzalez. And we also have one of our former staff members, Garrett, who has gone on to do great things with the Buta Main Street program. And I love to call out all of the members that are involved in the Main Street progress because it's not just the staff members that are here today. It's about everyone that has supported. It's about our council members that have supported us over time. It's about everyone who has volunteered their time serving on the board or helping with events. It's about everyone who has worked here and put in their time with Main Street as staff members. It really is a group effort, and it takes everyone working together. And it's just really wonderful to be here celebrating today. Thank you.
Clearly, there's a great team at work doing great things. So thank you. Please join us. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic species whose populations have declined by 90% in the last 20 years due to pesticides and herbicides, habitat destruction, and climate change. And whereas in participation with the National Wildlife Federation Mayoral Monarch Pledge program, the city of San Marcos has dedicated itself to becoming a sustainable habitat for monarch butterflies and other native pollinators. And whereas since 2017, the city has renewed our pledge to make San Marcos a monarch champion city by restoring monarch habitat throughout the community. And whereas the month of October is peak fall migration for the super generation of monarchs that travel from Canada and the United States to Mexico for the winter. And whereas to celebrate the monarch butterfly and spread awareness of its plight, the Discovery Center is hosting the annual monarch festival in conjunction with the fall native plant sale on October 11th, as the monarch depends on our native plants for survival and successful migration. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 24 as Monarch Butterfly Month, and do hereby call upon all residents of San Marcos to plant monarch-friendly native plants and help make their property a haven for monarch butterflies. Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you for what you all do, and it's great that you're helping make those native plants available for us to use.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being a sponsor for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge every year with National Wildlife Foundation. So this last year was our first year as a champion city, and I'm positive that we'll achieve that again this year. So we do hope that people will come out and join us at Monarch Fest and at the plant sale. We do have a milkweed giveaway at the plant sale to help people create monarch habitat in their yards. So one free milkweed per household, and then we also have milkweeds for sale as well. And then we have a monarch festival. Both of these are kind of really centered on understanding the monarch ecology and trying to be a part of it because we are along their migration route. This generation of butterflies that's going through right now, they live for about eight months, which is amazing. They fly, some of them all the way from Canada to Mexico, and then they all kind of, the eastern population funnel back through Texas in the spring. So plant your milkweeds now so they'll be ready next spring. Fall is the best time to plant. Right now, the butterflies really need nectar plants, so they're looking for those flowers. So if you have questions, feel free to reach out to us, and we'll hopefully see you at Monarch Fest.
Thank you. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the basic human rights of safety and dignity, and 205 Texans were killed in an intimate partner homicide, including 197 women and 26 men. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group of people, but cuts across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. And whereas the impact of domestic violence and teen dating violence directly affects individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships. And whereas last year, Haze Caldwell Women's Center, H C W C, provided face-to-face services to over 1,165 local victims of domestic violence and provided 6,693 days of shelter. And whereas last year, H C W C provided these direct services to 434 victims from the city of San Marcos. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 25 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and do hereby call upon the San Marcos community to recognize the importance of being aware of the violence inflicted on our vulnerable residents and support programs that help those in need of assistance, like the Haze Caldwell Women's Center. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you all do. This is a serious issue, and H C W C has been around a long time and helped a lot of people.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. My name's Melissa Odras. I'm the CEO of Haze Caldwell Women's Center. And just want to make a note that the numbers that we just shared for city of San Marcos, we just saw a 20% increase just with San Marcos domestic violence services that we provided. So we are at a capacity almost every day in our shelter. We are also very much in need of continued community support. We're facing some really difficult financial challenges moving forward, and really just appreciate everything the city has done to recognize the work. And as you can see, it takes a big community to address this systemic problem of domestic violence. So we're very appreciative of our community partnerships. We know that this is not something we can do on our own, and really appreciate that community involvement and the engagement. So thank you. Oh, also, next Thursday is Wear Purple Day. So if you would wear purple in recognition of domestic violence, take, like we have right here already, wear it again next Thursday. Take a quick pic and tag us on social media, just so our community knows how much we all care about this very important issue. So thank you.
Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and can enrich the lives of every American. And whereas the Texas arts and culture industry has grown 63% over the past decade, generating 7.3 billion for the Texas economy and $459 million in state sales tax revenue, as well as employing 9,600, I'm sorry, 960,000 people in creative careers. And whereas Texas school students who enroll in more arts courses were 46% more likely to pass the Texas Success Initiative criteria, twice as likely to meet Advanced Placement International Baccalaureate exam criteria, and 20% more likely to earn college dual-credit achievements. And whereas San Marcos has grown its public art collection to include sculptures, public art galleries, murals, adding stained glass mural and mosaic public art pieces in 2025. And whereas the San Marcos arts and culture community truly makes our city an arts destination through live music, theater, art markets, film festivals, and cultural celebrations throughout the year. And whereas the San Marcos Arts Commission will honor individuals making significant contributions in our arts and cultural scene at the annual SM Arts or SMARTS Awards presentation on October 9th, and will make its annual arts and cultural grants allocations this month to organizations and creators who enhance our community through artistic and cultural programming. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October of 2025 as Arts and Humanities Month in San Marcos, and do hereby call upon the residents of San Marcos to celebrate, create, and enjoy art during this special month and throughout the year. We got a lot going on here, and thank you all for making sure that it happens.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Trey Hat, Arts Coordinator for the city of San Marcos. And Mayor is right, October is busy. We have a lot going on. Just want to invite everybody to come out to our SMARTS Awards presentations tomorrow evening at the Price Center. It's free, open to the public. And yeah, I think... Time, 6 to 7:30. Good question. Anything, what else am I missing? And we'll actually be honoring Dabanga Banerji, who is an arts educator here in San Marcos. Also Jeffrey Brown, filmmaker, and he's also in charge of the First Tuesday Film Series. And then two organizations, Mothership Studios and Tantra, for their contributions to making us an artful community. So thank you very much.
We got a lot of stuff going on all year round, too. So thank you all.
Whereas Fire Prevention Week was established commemorating the Great Chicago Fire, a tragic conflagration that killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 people homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 structures and more on 200 acres on October 8th and 9th of 1871. And whereas the most devastating fire in American history was the Pushtigo Fire, which also occurred on October 8th of 1871, and raged through northeast Wisconsin, burning down 16 towns, killing 1,152 people, and scorching 1.2 million acres before it ended. And whereas those who survived the Chicago and Pushtigo Fires never forgot the tragedies and countless tales of bravery and heroism that led to a new approach toward fire safety and prevention. And in 1920, President Woodrow Wilson issued the first proclamation for National Fire Prevention Day. And whereas the San Marcos Fire Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, and the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association are dedicated to protecting the safety of our citizens and the preservation of property through their devotion to firefighting, emergency responses of all sorts, and to the education of citizens of all ages in fire protection techniques and practices. And whereas the Fire Department, Firefighters, and Fire Marshal's Office will reach out to the community throughout the month of October, teaching life-saving lessons of fire safety and promoting this year's theme of "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home." Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to recognize the importance of fire safety practices at home, school, and work, and to take part in Fire Prevention Month activities that will help save lives and property in our community. Thank you for what you do every day, and thank you for bringing this recognition to us. And I love it when you all go to the schools, because I still remember Stop, Drop, and Roll, and that was a long time ago.
Yes. Did you say you have used that, Chief Stevens? Who was our speaker today? Are you our speaker today? You're a speaker?
If I say anything wrong, you can blame it on Chief Henderson, because he's not here today. So we do thank you, Mayor and Council. This is obviously an important month. We do have our own tragedy here in San Marcos, which everyone knows about, that being the iconic Village Fire. In fact, Chief and I were talking about that at lunch. Zach Sutterfield, as many of you remember, was a survivor, for lack of a better term. Severe burns over 80% of his body, and now he goes out, and this is what he does all the time, not just in October, but all the time. So having his support, having the support of Mayor and Council, Chief Stevens, and everyone else, enables us to get out and push the same message, and we're grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas Eddie Durham was born in San Marcos, Texas, on August 19th of 1906 to Joe Durham, the town fiddler. Taught in a family music school organized by eldest brother Joe Jr., Eddie mastered banjo, guitar, and trombone by age 10. The Durham Brothers Orchestra toured the counties, I'm sorry, countries, circus and minstrel circuits. And whereas in the 1920s, Eddie toured the Southwest, performing with established orchestras. In 1929, he joined Moton's Kansas City Orchestra, modernizing their playbook with his arrangements. And whereas in 1932, Durham produced a recording using a riff, a repeated melodic phrase which shaped the Kansas City, KC, swing idiom. And whereas in the 1930s, Durham performed with bands Jan Sebitt and Artie Shaw with Billie Holiday, composing "Swinging the Blues," "Topsey," "Wham Re Bop Bam Boom Bam," and "Good Morning Blues." And whereas in 1938, Durham was the first to use an amplified guitar on Jimmy Lunsford's recording of "Hit in the Bottle," and an electric guitar on the Kansas City Five recordings. And whereas during the 1940s, Durham composed "I Don't Want to Set the World on Fire" for the Ink Spots. With mail musicians in short supply during World War II, Durham formed and toured with his all-star girl orchestra, The International Sweethearts of Rhythm, and the Durham Heads Brass Quartet. And whereas Durham continued composing and arranging during the 1950s and 1960s, and during a turing hiatus, spent time raising five children. In subsequent decades, he worked with Louise, Mama Lou Parks, Lindy Hop dancers backed by the Harlem Blues and Jazz Band. And whereas Durham was inducted into the National Academy of Arts and Sciences and the American Jazz Hall of Fame at Rutgers. And whereas Eddie Durham died on March 6th of 1987, and he is recognized as one of the most important swing jazz composers/arrangers. And whereas thanks to the passion, perseverance, and vision of Johnny Marie Armstead, founder of the Calaboose African-American History Museum, Topsey, Durham's daughter, and the Texas State Jazz Studies Program, San Marcos celebrates Durham's legacy with two tribute jazz festivals each year. And whereas this year's Calaboose-sponsored Eddie Durham Jazz Fest will take place on October 11th, from 11 to 5, in the park named for him at 205 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 11th day of October of 2025 as Eddie Durham Day, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to recognize the outstanding talent that came from our community, and to express our pride in the accomplishments of Eddie Durham, the internationally acclaimed musician from San Marcos. Thank you to those who keep this information alive in our community for providing the Jazz Fest, and just letting people know that some pretty fantastic people, there's some in San Marcos now, and there are a lot that have come from San Marcos. So thank you.
I'm not sure if we said in there that Marcia, Topsey, his daughter, and her husband were going to be here, but late last night, they decided because of the government shutdown and ATC, they just didn't want to risk it. And so that's why there are not that many of us here, because we were hoping they would be here as well.
They usually are.
And they usually are, yes. Thank you, Jane. Did you want to say something?
No.
We also have an art exhibit going on by Hank Hemsoth, who is a musician and artist in the Cefus House, and an art activity for Come and Go with all ages.
And the Cefus House being next door to the Eddie Durham Park, so will that be open during the festival?
Absolutely.
All right, so people come do two things on the same day. And the music is always fantastic at the Jazz Festival.
All right. Sounds great.
Everybody, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one, two, and... There we go.
Yes. Just a little bit. There was some tissues where I had a...
I thought you had your...
She ran.
Just takes time. I've got to go grab my...
All right, the event we've all been waiting for. Today, the city of San Marcos proudly celebrates the swearing-in of Tiffany Williams as the new city marshal. A momentous moment for both our city and our public safety team. Marshall Williams brings nearly eighteen years of law enforcement experience with the San Marcos Police Department, having served our community with distinction since two thousand and seven. Throughout her career, she has earned a reputation for integrity, innovation, and compassion, qualities that define her leadership and unwavering commitment to the citizens of San Marcos. As city marshal, Williams will oversee law enforcement and safety operations across the city's twenty-one hundred acres of green space, forty miles of trails, and beloved park system. She will lead teams across deputy marshals, parking enforcement, and municipal court security, ensuring that San Marcos' parks and natural spaces remain safe, welcoming, and well-protected for all. Since her appointment as interim city marshal in October twenty twenty-four, Williams has demonstrated exceptional leadership, coordinating safety initiatives, managing riverfront park operations during peak summer months, and fostering collaboration among city departments. Her vision for the city marshal's office is rooted in service, partnership, and community trust, very important for our city. The city of San Marcos congratulates city marshal Tiffany Williams on her well-deserved appointment. Her leadership will continue to inspire trust, collaboration, and safety. Congratulations, Marshal Williams.
Excellent.
I'm gonna swear you in.
Have you done this before?
Only for firefighters.
I haven't. Perfect. Me neither.
It's a repeat after me thing.
I got this.
Do you sit this?
Got it.
Yep. Okay. Just repeat after me. I, Tiffany Williams.
I, Tiffany Williams.
solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of city marshal.
The duties of city marshal.
For the city of San Marcos.
For the city of San Marcos.
Hays County.
Hays County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's the end of my official duty.
I think we did great.
I think we did good.
Oh, the floor is mine. I've had a lot of caffeine. I don't think that's really a good idea. There are numerous people that I owe many, many thanks to, but because concise is not something I struggle with, I am just going to look at some of those folks that have been very instrumental in helping guide me and doing some things and continue to support me all the time, and then who are always there when I have all of the questions or reminding me where I need to be, when I need to be, how I need to be. Thank you all. And now, we got work to do.
Is there a badge?
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to thank you for the wonderful job that you did as interim and for the wonderful job I know you're going to do in the full-time role. So thank you. Let the badge pinning begin.
All right, sis, don't mess this up. We do here dance?
Yes.
You all want to dance a photo?
I do, absolutely.
The marshal's office, all the ones that tell me, yes, photos. Oh, right. The marshal's office. Moss, moss.
We got ready to go down here.
Yeah, we got it. All right, everybody looking this way for me. Big smiles, ready? One, two, three. I'll take quite a few of these. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. Two, three. Awesome.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.